The special meeting of the Score ISD Board of Trustees will come to order. The date is Thursday, June 6, 2024. The time is 5:30 PM. And we have a confirmed quorum. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us in saying the pledge. Thank you. All right, we'll continue with public comment, specific to agenda items only. Each person who signed up was provided a copy of the open forum basic rules and advised when they sign up that policy BED applies to the process. Please respect the process during your presentation. Remember, each speaker is allowed three minutes. We'll proceed to open forum. Our first speaker is Ms. Rosie Perez.
Good evening, President Nahara, interim superintendent, Mr. Vasquez, and members of the board. My name is Rosie Perez, and I proudly represent the members of West Texas Alliance. Tonight, we have several individuals speaking about the issues of compensation that are important to our members. Our organization's efforts underscores the importance of valuing the hard work and dedication of district employees. While compensation and benefits are extremely important to employees, it is just as crucial to bring attention to challenges facing educators. Since the inception of our organization, our motto has been to restore respect to our profession. Respect encompasses valuing educators' knowledge and skills while minimizing redundant, excessive, insignificant duties. It means providing additional strategic, consistent, respected planning time for preparation and execution of lessons. It means removing responsibilities from their plate to provide a well-balanced work-life. It means providing mental health days to support employees' mental health and well-being. It means providing stout support to educators with challenging students and parents. The events at Herschel-Lantwin on May 20th are deeply concerning and highlight the need for robust policies to ensure the safety and respect of educators. The behavior exhibited not only by the students involved in the physical altercation, but those that were laughing and recording is a blatant display of the disrespect of educators. No educator should ever feel unsafe or disrespected in their workplace. Policies must be strengthened to send a clear message that such behavior will not be tolerated. District and campus administration must hold students and parents accountable, and support should be unwavering for educators. Educators play a vital role in shaping the future, and it is imperative that they feel valued and supported in their profession. Our presence here tonight demonstrates a commitment to finding solutions and ensuring that the voices of educators are heard. I am confident that with continued collaboration and advocacy, we can work towards a positive outcome for all involved. We thank you for your dedication to the education community.
Our next speaker, Teri Padilla.
Good evening, President Nahara, interim superintendent, Mr. Vasquez, and the members of the board. My name is Teri Padilla. I am a very proud member of West Texas Alliance. I am also both a very proud product of SISD and educator of 25 years. I have been a classroom educator for all of those 25 years in SISD. I have even taught some of your children. It is evident that you care deeply about the well-being of educators and the quality of education in SISD. It is crucial for school boards to recognize the hard work and commitment of teachers and staff, not just with words, but also with fair compensation and supportive policies. Acknowledging the workload educators face and providing the tangible support, like an extra conference period, is not only a demonstration of respect, but also an investment in the well-being and effectiveness of the entire educational system. Our job descriptions are and expectations have grown greatly, but the time to accomplish these goals has not. Educators go above and beyond these expectations. Granting additional time, such as an extra conference period, can indeed alleviate some of the pressures educators feel, allowing for more effective lesson planning, professional development, and a healthier work-life balance. The practical need for an additional time is crucial. With the current budget deficit, we understand that adjustments need to be made, both compensation and benefits. But do not disrespect us by giving us a pay cut. It is important for decision-makers to consider the impact of their actions on the moral and well-being of the educational community. Teachers are the heart of any school district, and their dedication should be met with gratitude and support from the administration and school board. Gratitude and loyalty must be reciprocated by SISD. By working together to address challenges and support one another, we can create an environment where everyone can thrive. Thank you for your advocacy and dedication to the betterment of SISD. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Tommy Hill.
How are you guys doing? Thank you for allowing us to see Mr. Manahura, President James Vasquez, interim superintendent, and members of the board. In past years, the board has been able to provide significant pay raises and a significant contribution to the healthcare costs. Unfortunately, the current lack of state funding with district decisions and expenditures has created budgetary constraints that could have a substantial impact on employees. While we know adjustments are necessary, we are asking for any insurance premium increases to be implemented in small manageable amounts on employees and their families. I would love to stand up here and request a well-deserved significant pay raise. But I am aware that the board has a fiscal responsibility to balance the budget while preserving as many positions as possible. However, a pay raise of possibly 1% to 2% or a stipend of at least 500 would help to offset any cost increases. In addition, the hiring freeze is creating significant constraints in departments trying to fulfill their duties while providing optimal customer service to employees and students. A few of these positions had recommended candidates for hire, but due to the lengthy hiring practices have now been placed in hiring freezes. Please review those positions to ensure that district operations can continue to function efficiently without causing undue burden to those departments. And I want to say this. We need to check on what positions that we're freezing. Because when we freeze too many positions, an attrition takes over, and we don't have enough people next year, just like transportation. You don't let them hire bus drivers, and they see they don't like this coming out. Don't blame the bus drivers for having to work until the job gets done. So if we're going to freeze positions, know that that's a possibility that's going to happen because attrition's going to take over. So maybe some of those positions should be frozen if we can make for sure that we are fiscally responsible in those positions. Thank you very much.
Angelica Soto.
Good evening, Board President Nahara, board members, and Acting Superintendent Vasquez. First, let me begin by expressing our appreciation for your volunteer service and dedication to the district. We have seen the district grow throughout the years, both in size and accomplishments. The district has grown from a small, little-known rural district to an urban district that is recognized statewide. Our district's priority has always been student learning and achievement. These achievements have been in large part due to the efforts of excellent educators working in the district. As we know, the district's greatest asset is its human capital. Socorro ISD's school boards have always recognized the contributions of its educators. They have also highly valued employees and have been most generous in the past with substantial raises and the retention bonuses which the employees have greatly appreciated. Now that the district is experiencing financial difficulty, we can only ask that if you can find the funds that you justly compensate the employees for their hard work without a raise or not even a step increase, employees will actually see a decrease in their take-home pay. This is due in part to the rising cost of health insurance that employees will have to pay. If we do not show our educators how much they are valued, then we cannot expect to retain or recruit the best educators in our area. And I want to thank you all so much throughout the years. I always tell people that from the very first day I was hired in Socorro in 1987, I've I received a raise every single year, and it's all due because the school boards have always valued their employees, and I thank you so much for looking out for them. Thank you. Thank you for your listening.
Okay, continue with our agenda, new business. A, consider approval of the 2024-2025 Employee Compensation Plan and Stipends. Selena Stiles, please.
Good evening, President Nahara, Mr. Vasquez, members of the board. Selena Stiles, interim Chief Human Resources Officer for the district, and this evening I will be presenting the Compensation Plan. So this evening, we're going to go over some plan options and then administration's recommendation. So option A is a 0% increase for admin, clinic, technology, para, and auxiliary employees, a step increase for teachers, nurses, librarians, and counselors, and that's a $1.2 million cost to the district, and no lump-sum payment for employees. Option B is a 0% salary increase across the board for all employees and no one-time lump-sum payments or retention payments for next school year. Option C is a 0% salary increase for admin, clinic, technology, para, and auxiliary employees, a step increase for teachers, nurses, librarians, and counselors, and as I mentioned, that's $1.2 million, and a lump-sum payment of $250 inclusive of the step for all qualifying permanent employees. Total package would be $1.5 million. Administration recommends option B, the 0% salary increase for all employees and no one-time lump-sum payments for the 24-25 school year. Any questions?
Can you go back to option A for me, please?
Yes, sir.
And C, please.
Question that I have is also on the agenda. It states, "Consider approval of health plan design recommendations for the current plan year and 2025 plan year." So my recommendation is, or I would like to see what that looks like before casting my thoughts for this. I thought that the health design was specifically for 2025. However, based on the way it's written, we might be making adjustments to this current year. So based on just what I heard from one of our speakers, if we do increase the health or the contribution to the health plan for our employees, they would then see a decrease in their take-home pay if we were to go with option B. Is that correct?
That is a possibility, depending on what the board decides. Yes, ma'am.
My recommendation is I would like to hear for B and table this until after that, and I would feel more comfortable in making my decision.
Macias, what I'm hearing you say is motion to postpone for A until after 4B, until after the presentation and maybe decision on 4B. Do I have a second? Okay, motion made by Mrs. Macias, seconded by... Motion made by Mrs. Macias, seconded by Mr. Nahara. Discussion.
Compensation plan also covers the stipends as well as campus staffing, correct?
At this time, yes, sir, but on the 19th, we will be bringing additional changes. It's just a working document.
So right now, we're only proposing, we're not looking at the whole compensation plan at this time.
I'll be bringing that for the regular board meeting. You're just going to approve the portion of the compensation plan for increases.
I have a lot of questions on the other part, so... It's what you just mentioned, and we can move forward.
Yes, sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right, item is postponed till after 4B. We'll continue with 4B then. Consider approval of the health plan design recommendations for the current plan year and 2025 plan year. Mr. Carmona.
Good evening, Board President Nahara, acting superintendent, Mr. Vasquez, members of the board. My name is Mario Carmona, Director of Human Resources, and I'll start by providing you with some information that most likely you'll recall from our last board meeting held on Monday during the budget exercise. Today, we're going to be going over the health fund status, revenue and expenditures, and district premium contribution per employee per month. You might recall that during our previous presentations, we have made reference to the deficit, that even though we're self-funded, at this point, we're not self-sufficient. The health fund is spending more money, that is what's being contributed towards the fund. And I'd just like to highlight the calculated deficit for the current fiscal year. And another important thing to highlight is that this projection is under the assumption that every month will look identical. As we know, every month, there is resignations, new hires, and so on and so forth, so there is a possibility that the numbers will change month to month, but we'll make sure to bring you that information as soon as there's an update available. As I mentioned earlier, our goal is to be able to find a balance in terms of how our health fund looks. So right now, just to give you a different illustration of how our health fund looks, we have our claims, which include medical and prescription, and we have our contributions or revenue. It's not, at this point, enough to be able to find that balance between the two main components. But what we are addressing today, and which was part of your budget exercise on Monday, is only the district contribution. At this point, we're not going to be discussing contribution from the employee per level of coverage. It's just to address the deficit, or I'm sorry, it's just to address the amount that's being subsidized from the fund balance over to the health fund. So you have four options, and here I included a few tables side by side. In the event that you wanted to see how it would look, any of those options would look in comparison to our current district contribution per employee per month. You have our current contribution, which is $575. So that means that if option A was to be the option that we would take, then everything will remain the same. There will be no change in the current contribution made by the school district. We have option B, which is a reduction of the district contribution by $20. Option C, a reduction of 50. And option D, a reduction of $150. So again, this is to give you an idea of what this could potentially look like. In addition to that, each table includes the potential district cost avoidance, because the less the district contributes into each premium, each level, it will be less money that the district will need to pay towards the health fund. As I mentioned, employees will continue to have the option to roll in the consumer-driven plan coverage for employee only at a zero premium cost to the employee. Employees and eligible dependents covered under any of the SISD health plans will continue to have access to the employee health clinic at a $10 copayment per member, per visit, and to the plan formulary generic prescriptions at a zero copay. The SISD employee health clinic will continue to provide delivery services for prescriptions. As I mentioned in previous presentations, the health fund has been running on a deficit for a number of years. So our goal is to be able to bring the information forward to you in a future presentation. It could be the month of July or August, to where we're going to be, depending on the contribution that is established by the school district towards the total premium, we will bring back the required premium for the health balance for each level of coverage to be able to make, find that balance between or level the expenditures with our contributions. The health fund forecast information for the upcoming plan year will be provided before each annual opening enrollment for employee benefits, and as you might recall, opening enrollment for benefits is held during the month of October. The good news is that administration is recommending a decrease of $20 from $575 to $555 for employee per month, and as I mentioned, subsequently, once a decision has been made by the board, we will bring over, you know, premiums, rates for the following plan year for 2025. So anything that it's made effective will not become effective until the plan year as of January 1st, 2025. And as I mentioned, later in subsequent meeting, we will bring plan design changes and so forth. Are there any questions?
Mr. Carmona, on the $10 copay, that money goes to the health fund?
Correct.
Do you know how much money we collected last year from the $10 copay?
I don't, sir, but I believe there's someone in the audience from the clinic who may be able to answer that question.
Ms. Juarez, I think if you know.
So you just, I'm sorry, President Nahara, Mr. Vasquez, and members of the board. I am Lorena Juarez. I'm the clinic manager. The copay is a $10 copay, which is collected to do an office visit as well as lab work, as well as medications provided to the patient, and it is a $10 copay. Just the year, yearly, it's about $44,000 that it's collected completely.
Thank you.
Mr. Carmona, can you go back a few slides?
Sure.
Was the one that talks about our health clinic? Right, right there. Employees and eligible dependents covered under any of the SISD health plans will continue to have access. Is this, so it is for dependents as well?
Correct, yes.
So it's not just for employees?
No.
As long as they're covered under the plan?
The Socorro ISD plan, yes.
Okay, I thought it was just for employees.
No, it's for employees and eligible covered dependents.
Okay.
And services include anything that's provided by the clinic, which is comparable to a family practitioner or primary care physician, to include services provided by the pharmacy.
Okay, and the copay for the dependent is also $10?
$10, yes.
Thank you.
Question, hi, Mr. Carmona.
Yes, ma'am.
So for option B, it would be a decrease from the district, $20 per employee per month. So does that equal to, or does that mean that our employees are going to have a $20 increase in what they pay per employee per month?
So I'll need to make sure to be careful when I'm answering that question, because right now, we're only addressing the contribution that is being made by the school district on behalf of every eligible employee who's participating in the plan.
Okay.
But please know that once we find out exactly what that contribution is going to be set at, we will need to go back to our numbers and see what each level of coverage, and those are employee only, employee and spouse, employee and children, and employee and family, what, how much they're going to need to contribute to be able to balance out that account. So to say that it will be $20 across the board, that will be inaccurate, essentially, because there's going to be an offset, there's going to need to be, we're going to need to make additional adjustments to be able to level that.
Do you know the minimum maximum?
I don't, but our goal is to be able to have that information ready for you during the June 19 board meeting.
Mr. Carmona, so what I'm hearing you say is the $20 reduction, we understand what the impact is here, but ultimately, what the cost of each levels of coverage depends on is the total cost of all the expenses, the claims that come through. It's math calculation, so we would reduce our contribution by this amount, and then the mathematical calculation of what is the total universe of expenses for the employees, what is that total, divided by each of the different levels of plans, coverage, et cetera, and then we would be able to arrive at that, but...
That is correct, yes, sir. And in addition to that, just like with any other change, there will be a shift in participation. So at that point, we will need to go back and look at, let's say, in the month of October, what people are enrolling in, and that will give us a better idea of what the funding is going to be looking like. But, but again, our, our expenses, our medical expenses are not decreasing, are only increasing, so we'll do our best to balance that out, you know, and make sure that everyone's paying their share.
So visually, based on the information that we have just in front of us, we would have 1.3 million possibly going to the deficit. Could you go to the slide that shows how much we're backwards? So 1.3 out of the 8.8.
Correct.
So that's seven, we're still 7.5.
Yes.
Can you assume that if the employees' minimum would pay $20 per employee per month, that would be, what, 3 million? So we're still 5.3?
Correct, yes, because the premiums, the way they're set right now, there's not enough money coming in to be able to cover the expenses.
So this would be step one out of a multi-year step. Is that what you're going to bring us in, in a couple of weeks to see?
That will be part of the information that will be provided, yes.
Questions?
Sorry, I apologize. I went ahead and looked at the number to give you a more accurate number. For 2223, there was a total collection of $49,670 for the copays, and that gets deposited to the general fund, not the health fund. Thank you.
Esteban?
Okay, so if, we're just...
Okay, so we're just talking about the district's contribution to each employee's premium, correct?
Correct.
Twenty-dollar, but the reflection on the employee can actually be higher?
It could be, yes.
And what are those numbers?
I don't have those numbers with me in today's presentation, but we can provide that information.
Well, I think it's important, because that's what you brought us all here for, is to hear these numbers, and I know the associations want to know what's going on with those numbers. It's like everything else, you know? We knew we were in a deficit in December, and here we are, you know, three weeks away from having to approve a budget, and we still don't have the numbers. Why is that? I mean, you're asking us to make a decision, this is an action item, on something we don't have all the answers to. I don't think it's right, this thing should be tabled, we should have another meeting next week where we get more information. Also, going back to the first part of the compensation plan, we don't have all the information. Plus, we haven't even adjusted the budget, we had a training on Monday, and we did, okay, we were aware, I think it was an awareness thing of what's going on, but the hard numbers aren't set. So you're asking us to make decisions on what's the district going to do, and, well, let's lock ourselves in and nail the teachers on this healthcare costs, and, but we still don't know the whole picture. We're not getting the whole picture up here for us to make a, a sound judgment and what to vote for. This whole meeting is a waste of time. You haven't told us anything new. It's the same thing over. We need to be already on the course to say, this is what our budget's going to look like, this is what we're set, and this is where we're going. And we have not achieved that yet. You're going to, you're going to run this down on the day of the actual meeting and say, here, take it or leave it, the shotgun's at your head, make the decision now. And that's what's happening, that's where we're going. This decision should have been made three months ago already, but everything was just stalled out through time. And here we are, I don't know the numbers, I don't have it with me. That is not right, that is why we're here, we're at. We have to take care of the teachers, we have to take care of the students, but we can't make the decision today, because we don't have the numbers. This should have just been part of the workshop on Monday.
Make a motion to table this item until the board meeting, because we need to have more accurate information. Mr. Carmona, I have a question.
Sir?
Mr. Barrera, there's a motion on the table.
I second it.
There's a second discussion, Mr. Barrera?
To miss, I see it's this question. Some of it's being, I guess, piecemealed. How can we get all the information at once to make a better sound decision, instead of making a decision here, decision here, and a decision here down the road? And it's like, wait a minute, we need to go back and fix the first one, because now we're on the fourth one, wait a minute, it's going to impact the first one. And I don't, I don't feel comfortable doing it in pieces. How quick or how soon do you think you can provide all the information that is capable and readily available as soon as possible to make that decision?
June nineteen.
Okay, so you'll be able to answer all our questions by then?
I can't predict what you're going to be asking.
Or most of the questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I think we have to have a meeting earlier, because we can't discuss it. If it's June nineteenth, we have to make the vote for the next fiscal year, Mr. Nahara. We need another meeting, and they knew this crisis was coming, and why we're still half information and incomplete, I don't understand.
One of the things that we need, we would need, in order to have that accurate budget number on the nineteenth, we would need to kind of know what the decisions are today, correct, Mr. Carmona? As I understand your concerns, and that's something, I'm not sure if that, that's something we could even provide before the end of the night tonight, some of those numbers that they're asking for. However, in order to provide you an accurate budget to adopt on the June nineteenth, we would need a decision today.
We can't keep kicking the can down the road. I understand, Mr. Carmona, this is a multi-step process. We have to, at some point, make a decision to give you some concrete variables then that you can take forward and start completing the rest of the steps along the way. You know, to not make a decision right now is doing exactly that, it's kicking the can down the road. If we make a decision today, and then we get to the end result later, and we don't like it, we can always reconsider. But looking at the three options right here, administration recommended the lowest one, the twenty dollars. You know, many of us, when we were doing the calculations on the workshop, many of us were at fifty dollars, so, you know, and we were well informed on what that impact was. Here, administration is recommending twenty dollars. They've explained that this is one of the initial steps to get us at the information that we're asking for, to complete the additional calculations. I don't understand why, you know, we can't adopt it right now, so that we can get things done before, you know, we have to adopt the budget.
If I'm understanding it correctly, you, you as, as our administrators have selected to recommend an option, that is, as Mr. Hill had requested, gently, it's, it's the amount that's going to affect our teachers the least. Everything else then comes from there. We didn't pick four hundred and twenty-five, which would have been a much greater impact on our teachers. So I think that we are being both fiscally responsible and we're being kind in the decisions that we're making for our staff, because I know it's tough. These are going to be some very hard decisions that we need to make. So regardless of the more information that we get, you have given us the best option, which is the reduction of only twenty dollars. So I, I think that we need to be responsible and be able to make a decision today, so that we can continue this process and make a responsible decision on Tuesday, but we need to give you the tools that you need to be able to work those numbers.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Kim?
Good evening, board members. Just wanted to make a comment about some of the comments that you're going through right now, and certainly, this is a very difficult decision. I think largely due to, as you pointed out, the timing of it. Certainly, this process could have done much earlier. Certainly, that's something that we're going to look forward to in the following years. Unfortunately, right now, we're in a point of urgency to some degree, because we have to make some decisions. And while we understand what the mechanics are here, you do have other options to consider. If you feel strongly about the fact that you want to go with option A, certainly, you can make that decision. Then the staff is making these recommendations, all four of them, with the caveat that you have some options here, that you're not just married to option B in some sense. But all of you know, by the exercise that we did on Monday, what the consequences are that. Now, once again, you're increasing or not addressing the healthcare deficit that's existing. Even with option B, you're not going to be addressing that in totality. We fully understand, though, none of our actions is going to address any of these issues in one year's time. It's going to take multiple years of some financial discipline, some management, that doesn't hurt in the greatest effect to your employees, to the staff members, to our transportation drivers, to child nutrition, and so forth. So we have to be very thoughtful about how do we do this in a long-term effect? If we want to solve this one time here today, then option D is your option. Because that four hundred and twenty-five, which had the largest impact to your employees, all employees across the board, but you are going to be solving that nine point six three would take care of the eight point or so million dollars in terms of deficit for this coming year. So the question becomes, which, which one do you want to address? And I think in some sense, by the discussion that you had Monday night, you want to address what's fair, at the same time, provide a level support to your employees. So the recommendation, certainly at this particular point, by the administration, is option B, to give some sense of balance in this situation. The other caveat is the fact that you do have a plan of insurance that begins in January. Most school districts actually begin in simultaneous with the fiscal year. So in many ways, you have to set this particular rate in order for the district to start looking at the various plans, consolidating potential plans, or eliminating plans, or increasing the plans, whatever it might be, which will then affect the premiums that the employees will go. So in some cases, it will be larger. In some cases, the employees may have to choose another plan to meet their budgetary requirements or budgetary constraints that they might have. I know that's a burden, but once again, that might have to be something that we bring to the table for you to look at in the month of Ju-, July and August, that you adopt, that will be enrolled in starting in January. So you have some of those competing issues from a timeline perspective, that's the case at this point.
I want to add something to that, so if we're trying to create retention, and we're going to blindside the employees and just say, hey, this is what's going on, and we're just going to approve it now, and they don't even know what it's going to look like down the road, how are we creating retention when we're just blindsiding them, and we're not given an opportunity to actually see what's going on? And all of a sudden, we approve it, and all of a sudden, we come down, and then all of a sudden, the numbers come down, and it's like, you know what, we have teachers going to different districts, or they just leave their career overall, they just retire, whatever it is. We no longer have retention. Now we're going to struggle even more. So kicking it down, kicking the can down the road, we've already been doing that, and this should have been addressed a long time ago. But these, these are numbers that we need to provide to our employees, so that there's no surprise to them, because I'm pretty sure you were that employee, and you don't know what's going on, and maybe you're in a financial situation, you would hate to be blindsided. So when I put myself in their shoes, and I'm one of those single parent teachers, and you know, we're only surviving off of my income, and I get blindsided, do I look for a different career? Do I leave the classroom? That's what I don't want for it to happen. I, you know, again, we could have addressed it much sooner, but we're here now. I mean, I just don't want to blindside, and I think that's not good to the employees if we want to create retention.
Yeah, I was surprised, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We have a motion by Mr. Barrera to postpone the item. A second by Mr. Castellano. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed wins.
Mr. Carmona, when's the last time?
I had additional comment before we took the vote.
I'm sorry, Mr. Castellano?
Yeah, I know, I know how it is.
I thought you had previously commented.
I was going to comment, but you took the vote, you stopped me and said, hey, we have a motion. I know, I understand how it is.
The, the only people now who can bring this item up again is the prevailing side. So, Mr. Guerra, you want to continue to talk?
Mr. Carmona, just a question, when's the last time that we changed the reduction of the contribution? Have we ever done that before?
I'm sorry, are you referring to the district specifically?
Yes.
It's been, to my knowledge, more than ten years.
Thank you.
Can I speak?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and just to clarify, the reason that I, I voted to kick the can down the road is just for that transparency. I completely, I think I understand that even though we vote on A, B, C, or D, whenever it comes down to our regular board meeting, then we could change our mind once we see the information. Is that correct?
Even...
It's just the way that it's written, it says approve.
Right.
So...
So one of the advantages that we have on our end is that we're self-funded, and we're talking about something that will become effective until the first of the following year. So we can always go back and look at numbers, we can, like Mr. Kim mentioned, we can always go back and see, you know what, we have three options, and as we're discussing the information, as we're discussing the numbers, we can remove on it one of the options, which is probably, I guess, the one that's costing, costing the more than in comparison to the other two. The, the school district can make any changes as they fit, as they see necessary, but again, as Mr. Kim mentioned, the goal today is for us to be able to receive information from the board, to be able to see in what direction we're heading. Once that piece of information is received, we can go back and bring over those possible changes. Like I mentioned, it could be a plan design change. Absolutely, it will be a rate change, without a doubt, because as I mentioned, the plan, the health fund has been running on the deficit for years. So funding from the get-go has never, since I've been here, enough to be able to offset the expenses.
So our recommendation will help you move forward?
Correct.
But once we see the information, we could then, as a board, come back and say, this is a different recommendation, bring us some new numbers.
Correct.
Thank you for the clarity.
You're welcome.
And we did that last year, or the year before that, Mr. Carmona, right, when there were some recommendations, I think it was for prescription costs, and I think copay costs, and the impact was greater than we had initially anticipated. So it was already in the plan year that we made some changes, and again, we're able to make those changes because we're self-funded.
That is correct.
I make a motion that we accept administration's recommendation for Plan B with the twenty-dollar reduction of district contribution.
Second.
A motion made by Mrs. Nahara, seconded by Mr. Guerra. Any further discussion?
I have a discussion, if I can speak this time. You were aware of that the twenty-dollar deduction, or reduction, was not linear across the board to all the employees, correct? It wasn't going to be twenty dollars across the board, increase to the employees?
It is linear when you look, if you look at it from a district contribution perspective.
But the employee, it's going to impact differently, right?
Every single employee eligible for benefits who chooses to participate in the health fund will receive the same level of contribution from the school district. If they choose a different level of coverage, or depending on what plan they select to participate in, that will make a difference in terms of what they will need to pay from their own.
But that cost will increase.
Absolutely, yes.
More than twenty dollars.
Absolutely.
That's the number I wanted. That's what you need, you know, they're right here, your employees, tell them. But we won't know that number until we adopt... You could have had a general number available, what's happening, you know, we're looking, because if it's not linear, you, you could have told them what's going to happen. This is what we're looking at. It's what it is.
Clarity just helps us with the next item. We're already looking at, or I'm looking at, item four A. You know, for the compensation, what would be affordable for employees? And then also looking at our other districts, again, the competitive piece of it, I would, I would like to see, you know, what, if we do choose, I think the motion is B, what would that look like? Because right now, Socorro is the top in compensation, and again, our health benefits, but with the recommendations that we're making, what does it look like, you know, within our area? Because we are competing for amazing teachers, faculty, staff, so on and so forth. So just for clarity, not that we don't want to support, it's just we want all the information so we can make an informed decision. And not just that, people are here to support us, they understand where we are, but just giving them that information so that they know, you know, what to expect. Thank you for listening.
Motion made by Mrs. Nahara, seconded by Mr. Guerra. All those in favor?
Amen.
Already called for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Item passes. Going back to four A. Thank you, Mr. Carmona.
Thank you.
Ms. Stiles?
Good evening again. Did you have any questions on my presentation?
So, just for, as a reminder, administration, we have option A, B, and C.
Correct.
Administration recommends option B.
Correct. Do you want me to go through them one more time?
No need. Motion?
Administration's recommendation was option B, is that correct? That's correct. Motion to approve administration's recommendation of option B.
Second.
A motion made by Ms. Garadaya, seconded by Ms. Nahara. Any further discussion?
Question is, so what we decide today, is that something we could also change our decision, once we get all the information during our regular board meeting?
That's a good question.
My understanding would be, and Mr. Blanco can confirm, it would be, yes, we would be able to, my challenge to that, though, is that if we consider, you know, changing it at whatever time, we would have to figure out where that revenue is going to come from, but, Mr. Blanco?
Thank you, Board President Nahara, Mr. Vasquez, members of the board, the problem would be your budget, so if you're going to... So if you're going to approve this, they need to have the information so they can work on your budget going forward. So while legally and theoretically you can change it, practically you can't, because you're going to be approving a budget coming up.
So with that, could we receive the information as far as the impact to our employees during our Friday packet?
I, I, I do want to kind of clarify something on that, what Mr. Carmona presented. Um, the timeline that we've set working with Mr. Kim is, um, that we are planning on bringing you options for plan design in August. So this piece of information is important, and to answer Mr. Castellano's question, immediately is the change linear? Yes, but down the road, depending on what option the board chooses with different plan designs, that will change. So right now, it would be a one-for-one, because that's what you're voting on, but there will be recommendations for plan design changes, and that's where those premiums will change. But that will be your choice based on the options that are provided.
Mr. President? Kim? I do want to add just one thing to Ms. Hia's question about the, any changes down the road. The one thing on this option B, as well as the other option, that you could change midpoint, uh, regardless of the budget, is the retention stipend, that can be done. Um, so if the board decides, let's say, at some point, um, with revenue projections, depending on what that might be, a two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, which was, I think, was the number that was discussed in previous board meetings, from my understanding, could be done at some point. In terms of the other salary increases and different things, as Mr. Blanco pointed out, it is part of the budget process.
Just for clarity, I just want to ensure that we know that this has, as far as no one-time lump sum payment for employees and zero percent salary increase for employees.
Correct.
So therefore, technically, they're getting the same paycheck. However, based on option four B, the health plan, they might, depending on what they elect, and that's up to them, they might be paying more, because we elected to possibly do twenty dollars less contribution per month from the district.
Correct.
So I just, that's what I want the clarity, that way employees know, you know, you're not going to get a raise, you're, this is what your take-home is. However, if you continue to elect the same insurance, it's going to cost you more, so you are going to get less money per paycheck. And that way, they could plan accordingly, and you know, everybody tightens their belt, I just want them to be able to have all the information. Instead of, they get the first paycheck, and then they're, they're short, and then they have to, you know, do what we do, ask family, you know, do bake sales, whatever we have to do. I just want to make sure that people have enough time, the runway. Um, and we have amazing people that are here to support us, but we need to give them the information to make informed decisions to support us.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Board President?
Kim?
If you recall, there's a participation number associated with each one of your plans that you have, and I think you saw that the other day. I can't exactly recall the numbers, but there's one that has a three-hundred enrollment, for example. So, one of the ones I think are, have the majority of your employees involved in that, I think there's like three thousand participants to that particular plan. So one of the things that I think the administration will do to work with your health provider is to make sure that the adjustments that can be done will be the least amount of effect on the largest group of folks that are involved in some of these plans. So I think that will be a conscious decision, conscious work, to make sure that there's a minimal impact as much as possible. But to your question, you're absolutely right. There will be some increases because of the reduction in the district contribution at this particular point. And I think the desire is, of course, and the plan is really, to have this adopted in August, with the board having at least multiple meetings towards that. To have the district in August and September, leading into October, to educate the public, your staff, about those particular plans.
Thank you.
Exactly, and these changes wouldn't take place until January, correct? It wouldn't be reflected on their first paycheck of the new school year, it would take place in January, therefore, we would have time to roll out this information to our employees.
Well, that's, that was the misinformation I had then, so this does not impact them from now until December. The twenty dollars that we just, that does not impact them.
That, so the enrollment period will start in October, and then these changes would take place in, uh, in January, correct? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for clarifying.
Any further discussion? Okay, motion made by Mrs., by Mrs. Garadea, seconded by Mrs. Nahada. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The item passes. Thank you, Ms. Stiles. All right, moving on then to five, executive session. The meeting is to be closed for discussion with legal counsel regarding pending complaint and demand for resolution from Dr. Ann Carmen related to his separation from Socorro ISD under Texas Government Code, section five-five-one dot zero-seven-one. The time is six-twenty-five, the date is June sixth, twenty-twenty-four. The time is six twenty-five, the date is June sixth, twenty twenty-four. (knock) (end of transcript)